Please call the roll.
Kuz, Harris, Carlson?
Here.
Piper, Wilson?
Here.
Seaverton?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Please join us in the Budget Leagues.
The Budget Leagues is the flag of the United States of America and due to the Republic from which it stands, a nation, America, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, that brings us down to... We have a public hearing on Resolution 142574, amending the 2014 General Government Annual Budget, Tourism and Economic Development Department of $144,422. Do we have anybody here to speak to that tonight? CNN will move out of the public hearing, go to communications. We don't have much on the communications, brings persons to be heard. And Michelle Budd? Come on in.
Well, I'm Michelle Budd, I'm the VP for Ambulatory Services at Ken Medical Center. I'm just available if you have any questions when you get to our issue on the patient terrace.
Thank you. Next, we have Troy.
Troy.
Tori.
Good evening, my name's Tori Corn, I'm the General Manager for Tac One Air, reside at 3710 Alaska Avenue. I'm here on behalf of Tac One and also Alaska Amphibious Tours are unable to be here tonight. But just mostly encouraging you or asking you to take action to reconsider extending the leases on the current dock vendor booths as is. Tac One's been involved in that program for about a year and a half now, we came back in last year, and it's become a pretty important part of our business. And as we're kind of looking forward to the 2015 season, we want the ability to be able to plan and hire and get ready for the season, just want to kind of know where we stand with that program. But also, I think the city's in a position now where, at least for the six tour vendor booths, you have six pretty reputable operators that are paying their rent and are going to be there year after year after year, and are in a pretty good position. As far as I know, haven't created any real issues for the way it's currently staffed with the Harbor Master and Assistant Harbor Master and their staff down there. And any issues that have come up, we seem to be able to resolve with the phone call or quick conversation. So, I'm here if you guys do talk about it tonight, to take any questions, are happy to take any now, if you have any.
Any questions? CNN, I think it'll be pushed off to the next meeting. Okay, topic, thank you. All right, anybody else here to speak to the council? CNN, we'll move into their agenda, consent agenda. Let me throw out a couple ideas, first before the consent, well, do we have a motion to consent?
Yeah, I don't remember who to consent.
No, we gotta add those first, don't we? Yeah, okay, sorry.
Yeah, they have to do that first.
Do that first, okay. Yeah, the... Well, first, before we even talk about consent, on 6A, I mean 6B on our budget, we'll just bring that up on Monday, we won't even, don't even have to defer that. And then on 72, A2 Port of Ketchikan Dock and Food, Dick has asked us if we could delay that until he gets back, and I see no problem doing that, so we'll just consider that move to the second meeting in the month. Items I thought possible for putting on consent, I have 7A1, rescinding the application for the Canute's Cove and Hole-in-the-Wall. Number four, the budget change for the public hearing we just had on the Tourism and Economic Development. And number six, change order five, final contract on Phase Three of Burz One and Two. And I had number nine, construction services for the Ketchikan Medical Center, Layton Dawson Joint Venture. Carl, is seven tied into that too? Pre-construction design.
7A7?
Yeah.
Is it tied in to...
I mean, what's the...
No, it says independent agreement, this is going to be for commissioning services affiliated with construction. This is the construction phase of that contract.
Okay, we'll take that several, okay. So then another one I have is... Oh, 7B1, instead of deferring, we'll just bring that proposed high lines reservoir thing in our budget meeting on Monday. And then the only other one I had was number three, budget transfer approved, change order one, equipment space lease with AT&amp;T up there at their building. That's all I have.
Did you seven and nine, 7A7 and nine or no?
7A1, four, six, and nine. B, three. And then we'll go from there. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, let's look through the items.
Approval of minutes for the special council meetings of October 13th and the regular council meeting of October 16th. Approval of a request by Richard Smith for a vacation of an unnamed and undeveloped right-of-way between Lot Six and Lot 8A, Block E, USMS 769, Chumbar Edition, 723 Harris Street. Budget transfer, the Senior Curator of Collections recruitment expenses. Amendment number four, contract number 1021, Ketchikan Medical Center master plan schematic design of Option 10A, Phases One through Four with NAC Architecture. Amendment and limited notice to proceed number five under contract number 1338, pre-construction services for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project, Layton Construction Company, Inc., and Dawson Joint Venture. Five-year pole and material storage lease agreement with Ketchikan Ready Mix and Quarry. Exempting the procurement of annual maintenance services for the IPTV middleware system from competitive bidding requirements with Minerva Networks. Rescinding the application for conveyance of uplands at Canute's Cove and Hole-in-the-Wall harbors from the State of Alaska to the city of Ketchikan. Resolution number 142574, amending the General Government operating and capital budget to provide a supplemental appropriation for the Tourism and Economic Development Department in the amount of $144,422, and authorizing professional services agreement for the evaluation of Thomas Basin Sheet Pile Retaining Wall, PND Engineers, Inc. Change order number five, final to contract number 1308, Phase Three of the Burz One and Two Rehabilitation Project, Orion Marine Contractors. Amendment and limited notice to proceed number seven, contract number 1338A, construction services for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project with Layton Dawson Joint Venture Constructors. And finally, budget transfer, approving change order number one to the equipment, space license, and power agreement between Ketchikan Public Utilities and AT&amp;T Alaska.
Anybody have any comments on that?
7A1, rescinding the application for conveyance of the uplands. I see the discussion about maintenance, but when we look at parking at those locations for the use of the harbors, are we going to attempt to continue to monitor parking, or have we not? I thought we had been. And how is that going to be affected in the future?
Steve Copron, Port and Harbors Department. We don't enforce parking there, we enforce use of the launch ramp, which includes hanging the, either having a sticker on your trailer or hanging the daily pass from your mirror. So if someone's just illegally parked there, there's nothing that we have the authority to do. So, we usually ask the troopers to intervene in that, they usually refuse. So then we ask the borough code enforcement guy to go out, usually it's like a car or truck that gets abandoned out there.
Right.
And so, we use the borough to enforce that.
To enforce that, and besides that, I mean, I know it's, I know they've done a lot to develop in the years to make the parking a lot more accessible. But as we continue to manage and maintain these sites, is there any worry that we need to have dedicated parking and we need to have control over that, or are we okay with that? With not having any, any issue?
Even though we don't have teeth, as far as the actual parking part of it, it hasn't been an issue. Usually the issue is going up the road, when the lots fill up, then people park up the road, and people complain to us saying that they shouldn't be able to do that, and we say, well, we have, it's really out of our hands. The issue, one of the issues I had when I saw what it was that the state, what was asked for, see, this all started before I got here, it's taken that long to come to the desk of the guy up at the state to look at it. I assumed that they were talking about the parking lots and the park, and the trestle right above the launch ramp going up, but it's like the road over halfway up, and all the way over by the dockside galley and that. I don't want to be responsible for plowing that, and ice melting that, and keeping that up in the wintertime, you know, so... It just didn't make sense, and plus the guy says, he's kind of sure, the more he looked into it, he doesn't think the state has the authority to transfer the land to us anyway, because of the type of land it is. But before he dug into it further, he wanted to know if we wanted to proceed. And based on everything I saw, I just didn't see a good reason to keep pursuing this.
Okay, I was just making sure that the harbors and the users have ability to use that for parking.
We have the signs out there, it's just technically we can't enforce the parking. But it's, it hasn't been that bad.
Thanks, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Carl, the only thing I have is on the Harris Street vacation, that old right-of-way, which is good. I know they're looking at putting in some apartments there, and one thing, I don't know, I've talked to the planning commission member, if they're going to have access to this, and I've, from what, vacating this, it looks like they're going to do the parking down from the Harris side. If they have any access, do we review those, get a chance to look at those? Or does that just come out of the planning to the local people in the living in that area up there on Grand Street?
If the council wants us involved, we can try to get involved.
My only thing here, if we can put in, if they're going to have access up Grand Street, is my concern, there's no parking up there, and if that's going to be the quick way to get down into the facility there, I can see we're having, we're going to have a real parking problem, so that needs to be addressed. You know, they already fight for spots on Grand Street now, and if they're going to put in apartments up there and then have some parking down below, but easier access from the Grand Street side, I see a problem coming, so, just a heads up.
You can make those comments.
Thanks. All right, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, and that same one, is Carl, we checked to make sure that we don't have any drainage issues that need to be addressed with that easement. I know that there are drains in that area, and it's on a hillside, which probably bleeds a lot of water, so...
All right, call the roll.
Harris?
Aye.
Zingy?
Aye.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
All right, that passes, thank you, everybody. That brings us down to new business 7A3, Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion, Restoration of the Patient Terrace. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to direct the City Manager to prepare a change order to contract number 13-38A, construction services for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project between the city of Ketchikan, Layton Dawson Joint Venture Construction, providing for the restoration of the patient terrace. To the proposed scope of work at the cost not to exceed $367,807, and authorize the City Manager to execute the said change order. Upon receipt of signed agreement between the city and Peace Health stipulating that the not-for-profit agency will fully fund the cost of the patient terrace, including any incidental expenditures or engineering, architectural services in which obligate Peace Health to pay for any maintenance replacement costs associated with the patient's terrace for the period that the agency leases and occupies the Ketchikan Medical Center.
Second. Moved in second, any comments, Bob?
No, I think they've looked at the scope of work, and I don't think the reflection pond's going to be there, or maybe the other, I'm not entirely sure.
Reflection, no.
No, that's not going to be there, and I think that's probably a good move compared to for maintenance and stuff. But it is an area that's available, and if they want to move ahead with it and going to bear the cost, I think it's fine.
All right, Matt?
Yeah, oddly enough, this is something I always supported for this, because hospital, you need places to go and just relax, and I'm glad it got put back in.
All right, call the roll.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuz? Oh, sorry, Harris?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes five to nothing. Michelle, thanks for coming. All right, that brings us down to item 7A5, Authorization and Offer of Employee Building Official, Matt Elberston. Now I feel old.
Your honor. I move the City Council authorize the City Manager to offer the position of building official to Matt Elberston of Ketchikan, Alaska, based on a compensation level of Step G of grade 360, which provides an annual salary of $60,070.
Second. Moved in second, Matt, do you want anything?
You know, my only issue with this is I think there is a pre-standing reason that these positions come before us with internal applicants, where they get more than 4%, they have to come before us for authorization. I think that 4% threshold's a little low.
Let's bring it up in budget time.
Well, I mean, it's just a policy thing.
So, I don't, we can talk about it.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to nothing, that brings us down to number seven, amendment number one, Contract 1419, Pre-Construction Design Phase Commissioning Agent Services for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project, Affiliated Engineers, Inc. I guess we're just adding for now the construction phase of their work, okay? Anybody with a motion?
Yeah, honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council authorize the City Manager to enter two amendment number one to Contract 14-19, Construction Phase Commissioning and Agent Services for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project between the city of Ketchikan and Affiliated Engineer, Inc. of Seattle, Washington, at the cost not to exceed $217,165, and approve the funding from the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project Capital Account.
Second.
Moved in second, Bob?
I think this is something that's been, we knew we were already going to get to, so I'm glad we're moving forward, and we're going to be into that construction state before we know it.
Excellent. Call the roll.
Z?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right, that brings us down to item number eight. Amendment number one to memorandum of agreement between the stable asset and C of Ketchikan for the rehabilitation replacement of off-system city bridges. Do we have a motion?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to approve amendment number one to the memorandum of agreement between the State of Alaska and the city of Ketchikan for the rehabilitation replacement of off-system city bridges, and direct the City Manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the City Council.
Second. Moved in second, do you want anything, Matt?
Yeah, I just, I have one question, let's see if I can find a spot here. Page two of three of the MOA, item number 10. The department's responsibility is to provide regular invoices to the city for inclusion, and the city must submit to the State of Alaska Commerce and Economic Development for reimbursement, which will include a 4.79% charge to cover indirect cost allocation plan rates for highway projects. Is that, we're going to be paying a 4% fee to the state?
That's correct.
For a grant that they gave us?
It's standard for DOT on any project like this to assess an ICAP charge, to recoup their charges. What they would argue is, it's appropriate for them to be paid because they're overseeing the construction of this project on our behalf, as opposed to us taking this money, going out and hiring a Dell HKM like we're doing with the hospital to oversee the construction of the project.
No, I just think it's silly.
I don't disagree, but I'm telling you that their response would be...
That was my only comment.
Anybody else? What's the timeline on all this, Carl?
They have the utility relocation contract out on the street right now. It was to be, I think, open this month, I think it's been delayed a month. Actual construction of the structure, I think, is scheduled to take place sometime starting 2015.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Wilson?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Did we put number nine on the consent?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, brings us down to 7B. One, we have already moved to the budget. Two, budget transfer, procurement of quilt internet caching system. Wilt. Wilt. Do we have a motion?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council authorize the General Manager to transfer $20,000 from the telecommunications division's 2014 software and equipment maintenance account, account number 635-04, and $20,000 from the multi-dwelling unit capital account to the internet caching system capital account in order to provide sufficient funding for the procurement of a new quilt internet caching system.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Matt, any questions?
No, seems like something we need to do for business.
Yeah, sounds good.
Your honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
You know, this is one of those accounts that I brought up in budget discussion, and it's that normal growth stuff, and I asked about that and talked to our finance director a little bit. And at some point through the years, the divisions or departments are asked if they're going to utilize all that money. This particular account is one that they spent very little out of the, the, one in regards to the multi-dwelling unit capital account. And then we start taking money out at the end of the year, like this now, to put things into systems that we may not bring forward as a capital account next year. And so, my fear was that those things might be used as a slush fund. I understand the need for this stuff, but I'm just a little concerned about how we go about funding those with that normal growth stuff, so, just a thought.
Thanks, Bob. Call the roll.
Seaverton?
No.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Yeah, that passes four to one, brings us down to item B4, Budget Transfer Collision and Final Stages of 4G LTE Deployment. Do we have a motion?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council authorize the General Manager to transfer $64,208 from the telecommunications division's 2014 rent and leases infrastructure account, account number 645-04, to the 4G LTE capital account in order to provide sufficient funding to complete the final stages of the 4G LTE deployment as detailed in the telecommunications division manager's report dated October 28, 2014.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and Matt?
Same comment as before.
Number four. Anybody else? Call the roll.
Harris?
Aye.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to nothing, brings us to number five, Purchase Order for Relocation of Whitman Lake Hatchery Bypass Line, Pool Engineering, Inc. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
Pursuant to sub-paragraph B1, Section 312.035 of the Ketchikan, I move the City Council authorize the General Manager to issue a purchase order to Pool Engineering in the amount of $24,000 for the relocation of the Whitman Lake Hatchery bypass line and approve funding from the electrical division Whitman Lake Hydro Project Capital Account.
Second.
Moved in second. Bob?
No, we've had some issues out there with flows, and we want to make sure that we, at no time will ever impact the hatchery water system, so this bypass is necessary for when we're doing work cleaning or they need extra water, so...
Anybody else?
Your honor.
Go ahead, Matt.
Who's going to pay us back for this?
Carl?
Okay, thanks, Carl. Just a question slash comment.
Thank you. Call the roll.
I wanted to hear your answer.
We're paying for it.
I think there's still going to be claims at the end of this, is that correct, Carl? Whether this comes into it or not, I'm not entirely sure.
There are claims that are being pursued. If the council would like an update where we stand on various components of those claims, I would suggest that you request an executive session, and I will provide that if we...
Isn't that, I'm sorry. That's not going to be all determined until after we get this whole thing done, is it? What all the claims could be?
Fair statement.
Okay. All right, call the roll.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
That passes five to one. No, five to nothing, excuse me, that brings us down to vouchers, $3,911.71 to the Ketchikan Daily News. Do we have a motion?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
I move for approval of vouchers to Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of $3,911.71. Second.
Moved in second, call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes five to nothing, brings us down to managers' report. Carl, do you have anything to add?
Just a couple very deeply, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Finance is diligently working on trying to get the general government budget out to you by tomorrow, but it may slip until Monday. One of the things that the city attorney and clerk have been working on this past year is the codification effort that the council approved relative to updating our code. I think you'll be pleased to know that that is now starting to produce results, as you will have at least 19 ordinances on your next agenda. The other thing is, I just want to commend Andy and the folks at the electric division, linemen, operators, mechanics. They all did a yeoman's job over the last 24 hours, and I've said it before, but I'm going to say it again, we're very fortunate to have that quality of group of employees working for us. I just want to express my appreciation and tip my hat to Andy and his people.
Did you say that to the fire department, too? I saw the fire truck out there.
Fire department participated in the restoration of yours, too. So, you're right, it's all about...
All right, anybody have any questions on the managers' reports? Carl, I want to thank you for getting me number 10, the drive-down float ramp bo-rail. Go from there, I don't have anything else. Anybody else have anything on there? Hearing none, that brings us down to city clerk's file.
Nothing, your honor.
City attorney's file.
Nothing, your honor.
Future agenda items. Mayor and council comments. Judy?
Nothing, your honor.
Deanne? Matt?
Nope.
Bob?
Yeah, I talked to Josh before the meeting here, and it came to my attention that there was a threat assessment done to KRVD or one of the radio stations. I'd asked if this building had ever had one of those done. And he said they haven't, so I would maybe request that we have that done at some point in the future on their schedule.
Okay. All right, KJ?
Just want to say what a good job KPU Electric and everybody else did this morning, hook us back up with power when we lost it. Had a lot of people complaining, but I wouldn't complain, and I still have power. Good job.
Well, thank you, KJ. Again, I thank everybody for their work this morning, it was, boy, it went off so quietly, they didn't even really know it went off. And I was glad that the downtown didn't go off, because it saved me a lot of anguish down at the paper, turning things off, restarting, so, it's always a happy day. That brings us down to, shoot. Wish I had my paper, I had one other comment, and I can't remember what it was, and I wrote it written down. That's not been a very important, that brings us down to executive session. Do we have a motion for executive session to discuss potential litigation associated with the contract number 1234, Jackson Street Area Reconstruction Project, SNS General Contractors and Equipment Rentals, Inc.
Your honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to declare that it's best interest of the city go to executive session in accordance with KMC 2-04, or dot, excuse me, 025A1 and 3, and AS44.62.310C1 and 3 to discuss SNS General Contractors and Equipment Rentals, Inc., performance under contract number 1234, Jackson Street Area Reconstruction Project, and potential legal strategies that the city may wish to pursue in the event that the company files litigation, seeking additional compensation outside the normal provisions of contract, files litigation, seeking additional compensation outside the normal provisions of contract, which includes the need to discuss subjects of knowledge which could have adverse impact upon the finances of the city, and to discuss potential litigation strategies with legal counsel within attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Do we have a second? Call the roll.
Carlson?
Before you go there, I'm going to declare a conflict. My son is a works for SNS and has been a supervisor on that particular project from time to time.
Sounds good.
Any excuse to get to the meeting.
Mitch, is that, should we keep him out of the meeting, or no problem being in the meeting? Your call.
Well, I don't know. It's my call. I think it's yours, Your Honor, but, you know, on the face, I would have seemed to raise a concern. I don't know how deeply his son's involved, or his son's, you know, within the control group of somebody we're going to be in litigation with. It's probably not a good idea.
Okay. Bobby, relax or go home.
I'm going home.
All right, have a good one.
Oh, come on, Bob. Sit here and wait for us.
Call the roll, please.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Upstate.
And Z?
Yes.
All right. We'll adjourn from this meeting and re-adjourn in the other room for the executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Bob, do you think I even go hold it earlier?
I can, yeah.